30th, 2018, it is 4:30 PM and we are in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. This is a work session tonight, so we're going to try to roll downhill tonight. We do have one Mayor's Award to Cindy Wolf, looking forward to that. Number two is a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Central and Washington Bridge repairs. Nick?
Nick?
Are you coming up for the Central?
Don't worry about us, Nick, we just...
Sorry, Chief asked me a question.
Way to go, Chief.
I guess I'm up here for a while, too. Central Bridge, we received bids back last Tuesday. Brant Construction Company was the low bid at $297,818. The budgeted amount for this project was 350. The engineering we had hired out with Stanley Consultants, who did Mount Pleasant Street Bridge as an add-on. The total engineering cost is at $52,000, so it brings our total budget up to $350,720. So we're $720 over budget. We're using Tiff financing to pay for this. In the original layout of the plans, it had called for multiple-year type implementation. Rather than doing that, we had talked about just doing it in one year to get a better cost. I think that the projected estimate on it was fairly accurate. I would recommend moving forward, since we have known bids on this. I don't think the bids are going to go down any. There's more work at one time. We can make up the difference. There'll still be a little inspection work left to do on it, and there's also a change order. I don't know if you've noticed, the west or the west, the east arm, which is Washington Street, has a couple of, actually, the second deck has got some issues now. We've patched it with asphalt for right now. I don't know what that, that project will change order out at, but it might be kind of significant, so this project cost will be a little bit higher.
When you say significant?
I don't know the dollars on that.
Then why'd you say significant?
It might mean, it might, well, I mean, in context of what we're spending at 350, it might be a $10,000 to $20,000 change order.
Okay.
But it needs to be fixed, so I don't know what, until you get cut into the deck, I don't know if you know what it's going to cost.
Okay. You guys good?
Yes.
Okay. Number three is a reso, did you say something, Butter?
I said, "Thanks, Nick."
Number three is a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Tama Building permeable alley. Chuck? Nick? Chuck? Nick? Chuck and Larry?
I think you sent the memo.
Anyway, I know enough, I know we received bids about it. I think the memo said, I would like you to get up and talk, because my personal recommendation on this is, is we went out and got bids. There hasn't been any movement on the, the south half of the alley. I would feel as though we, we kind of put ourselves at risk by awarding bid right now without that south, without, knowing that that south half will be done by the year end. I know that Charlie has talked with the Idols folks that we can get an extension. My recommendation would be to wait and re-go out to bid after that south half has been completed, and then ask for that extension at that time. So upon that, I would not award bid.
Chuck?
I got up here, and Nick said exactly what I was going to say. So staff is recommending not awarding bid at this point. We have a grant, our match for the grant is the Tama developers doing their half of the alley. They need to be done by the end of this year, or we don't get our grant money, so it would be, in our opinion, foolish to go ahead and do the project with the risk that they not get it done by the end of the year, in which point we would be out all of the money, we wouldn't be backed by the grant funds. So if they do go ahead and complete their alley by the end of the year, at that point, we can ask for an extension, but we think it's too early right now to award contract for this project.
This is one that you've asked for a couple of extensions as, as it's gone along?
Right. Our project partner here is Tama Developers, and they haven't moved at the same pace we've moved, so we've been asking for extensions to try and let them keep up with us. They haven't performed yet, so what we'd like, so at this point, if they don't get their project done by the end of the year, we're just going to walk away and not be able to do this project. Not an ideal situation, but we don't want to put ourselves out, our $75,000 of the, basically, be local money with no grant funds.
What is the likelihood that they'll make that deadline?
They say 100%.
We have our...
We, they've said that before about other deadlines, so, yeah, it's hard to say.
I think it's the responsible thing to do. I'm glad to hear that, and I definitely, I'm all in on, on what staff is recommending. You guys good to go?
Yep. That would take a, the resolution is on to, to award bids, so if you were to follow through on the recommendation, it would be to...
Vote it down?
Vote it down.
Vote it down? I would vote no. All right, then. Brings us to number four, resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Front Street Hawkeye Arch Sewer Repair. Mr. McGregor?
Unfortunately, I don't have any numbers or, or the estimate for this project. As you know, that this is, this is an emergency-type project. There's already been some work that has gone on to at least secure the Burlington Short Line Railway to, to operate for a few days, and then there's been continued work on the north side, or the north side, the east side of the tracks to shore up when they do excavate to make the permanent fix. To keep the soils and the dirt from falling in on top of them, they've done some shoring up. That's all been part of the emergency. Since we have the opportunity to award bid through council rather than through the emergency method, I felt it was best to have this come through council. We will not have any numbers until Monday. We're doing a bid opening then amongst some selected contractors. I will have a estimated dollar figure to you in the packet that we'll be able to talk about, but up until this date, there's been, there's been quite a bit of work done that's been done already underneath the emergency awarding situation. So it's been time and materials. I don't know what the dollar figure is at to date, but it's pushing over 100,000, is my guess. By the time this is all said and done, we will have spent a pretty, pretty good chunk of money on this project to, to make sure that it's...
Do you do sheet piling still over the weekend?
Yes, it was done Friday and Saturday. There was some sheet piling done on the east side of the tracks where the first, the first hole had been exposed on the west side of the tracks. The sheet pile had been put in, and then they actually, they put flowable and rock back in today, so they can move the temporary tracks east of where the current tracks are right now, and then they can expose that full section.
So, I mean, you're even working with, who's the engineer on this project?
We're using Klingner, Brian Braes specifically.
You're even working with him last week, trying to come up with some design work for this bid that's to be, we're supposed to have the bids back next Monday, but you're trying to come up with a, a very quick fix on an issue. I mean, this is something where you get another rain, heavy rain event, and filling that tunnel up when it's in a weakened condition, there's just concerns that the longer that it waits, the more potential you have for additional potential cave-ins. And with the sheet piling, part of what they're trying to get to is getting a structure in place, and this final design in place that helps to provide a little bit more strength right in that area where that crossing is as well.
There's a lot of factors that are at play here. You know, this is the storm sewer for the Hawkeye system, and so there's actually river water currently in, in the tunnels that, that's coming back, and so when the hole was exposed, you could see when a barge had come by, because it would suck out the water, and then you could see it come back in. So at 14 foot, you could, it was about a couple of inches from the top of the box. So now it's down to 12 foot, should be down to 11 sometime next week. So you should be able to see a little bit more once we get stuff exposed, but there's still be quite a bit of water to work in there. We don't exactly know the height of where the straight part of the box is when it turns into the arch, but ultimately, what's going to happen is they're going to take off the crown of the old arch system and reinforce it with, with a new system, with, with bars and concrete.
And this is the southern arch?
The southern chamber, correct.
So you have two chambers there, and the concern is making sure that we do a fix that doesn't, now during this whole process, you end up with something potentially happening to the other chamber as well. So, I mean, this is one that there's a lot of risk involved with, and that's been something that's been a concern as, as Klingner's worked with several potential contractors on this to make sure that we're...
And unfortunately, a lot of the risk does fall onto us, because we're the owner of the property.
All right. Brings us to number five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign our town grant application through National Endowment for the Arts.
Zach James here, but this is just in general, is an application for design, and Zach will go into more details on it, for Nancy Navy Park. That's a park that Park Staff, DPI, others have been looking at for a little bit now, how to make a better use of that park in our core downtown area, especially with some of the increased development activity in that block, and in the downtown in general with more residential, and make it a more usable and useful park, try and improve upon its current function. And this grant was brought forward through Zach and some others as an opportunity to maybe do some design and incorporate some margin in the park, and Zach can talk a little bit more about the details.
Yes, this is a grant application, as Eric said, through the National Endowment for the Arts, called the R-Town Grant Program. This is specifically a program that we've never applied to before, but it came to our attention and has several different eligible, eligible costs, but the one thing is, we went through it, that kind of caught our attention, was the one about design for public spaces. And through some other conversations with some folks at the city and downtown partners previously, we knew that there was some, and specifically with downtown partners, they had worked with the Iowa Economic Development Authority to do kind of some very rough sketchups of redesign of the space before. And so based on what the grant could be used for, we thought it might be an opportunity to get some detailed design of the space. You can do, in this particular case, you can ask for, the minimum cost is between $50,000 to $200,000. I think we'd be looking at the minimum cost at $50,000 total project with the grant covering $25,000. Talks with Eric and city staff. He thought that he could commit $12,500 from the city, and then we've been talking with the Art Center as well about the other half of the local match, not necessarily directly from them, but maybe doing some fundraising with some local artists and other organizations to come up with that half. Essentially, with the application, we're still working on it, again, would be for detailed design of redesign, I guess I'll say, of Nancy Navy Park, is more of kind of a plaza, public space, kind of in the front, maybe some other things in the back, but also, this is a grant through the National Endowment for the Arts, so it has to include definitely some art components, so looking at how you incorporate art into that space, whether it's like performing arts, and maybe having some type of stage, mural on the side of the building there, you know, with some type of fencing, or, you know, blocking of the, shading from the bridge with some kind of artistic feature, things like that. So that would all be part of the grant, is doing a detailed design, how to incorporate those things, and basically getting it to a point where it could go up for bid. We've been talking with Confluence, who's doing some of the, some other work for the city, about some cost estimates and what it would take. And so we think that would actually be less than the 50,000, so the idea would be to incorporate at least, you can cover creation and installation of public art with the grant, but you can't do any actual construction, so that's why we decided on the design, and then maybe trying to incorporate at least one piece of public art with the grant, and that's kind of ties back to the Art Center. So what we'd specifically be asking for here is a resolution from the mayor, a resolution from the council, and then there's a requirement, there's a letter from the highest-ranking public official, so we had a draft letter from the mayor as well included in there.
I love, I love the idea. I've been wanting something done with that little corner for a long time, and, well, I guess not for a long time, long time, but for a couple of years, and, yeah, I'm really, really excited to see what, what can be done with that little space, so looking forward to that.
Does the sculpture of Nancy that we have down there now qualify as part of this art?
I think we would definitely include that in the narrative, that that's an existing piece of art, it would remain in the park, it's not going anywhere, and I think just the narrative and the background of the story with Nancy Navy being the mayor and all those things, I think definitely plays a part into the application, so.
Maybe even highlighting, you know, other influential women of Burlington kind of thing, I don't know. So I was just...
Great, we just leave them in.
Absolutely.
That's just great.
Hey Zach, what about some type of sculpture, drinking fountain kind of thing? I always think water that bubbles or shoots in the air, or at least provides, a drinking fountain is a draw to people. I don't know if that could be worked into a sculpture or not.
I have no idea. I would say it could. I think at this point, the process, well, applying for the grant, if we get the funds, I think all those types of things would be...
Okay.
Part of the process, once we got the funding. It's kind of determining what the space would be and what features would be there, but I think the preliminary discussions have been things about adding some type of water feature, whatever that, whatever that may be, some kind of stage where you can have music or events or things, so.
I can dig it.
Lots of different ideas at this point, but I think it would all get more refined and decided if we got the grant and had somebody actually do the design of the space.
Part of the design would incorporate public input, so it'd be opportunities to have meeting and input, and we've talked about a mural, mural wall or graffiti wall, and that could be something that could be looked at. We've talked about water features and shade structures, and having that plaza off of Jefferson where the Santa House is now, that every year we're having to replace that grass and redo that, so something a little more hardscape there. So there's a lot of different options that we could get input on and incorporate into this. Timing-wise, it isn't until FY '20, July 1st, 2019 would be the earliest anything could start on that, so it's a longer-range plan.
So the parking lot that had been discussed down there on the BNSF land, there were some conceptual drawings that were done that included an art wall on there, that buffer wall.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking on the parking lot there.
With what, I can't remember what group out of DED had done that. Do you, do you know, Steve?
Initially, he asked Main Street Iowa Design Consultants to come up with some kind of redesign of that area, the area underneath the overpass.
Steve, can you move in, because somebody's going to say they didn't hear you.
That area, and the area underneath the overpass, and maybe a way to, to connect it to possible future use of that BNSF lot, so, yes, it kind of ties into them. We have Main Street Iowa come up with some preliminary renderings, just to kind of help us visualize what can fit on the site.
That was something that was presented to the council last summer, like June or July, and when part of, is, is we've had some discussions about wanting to have a wall that you could potentially do some artistic renderings on, and then as we've talked about the desire from BNSF to have a, a separation wall between their line and any parking area that could potentially be there, I just kind of wondered if that, doing some of that design work, and maybe, I don't know whether it's a dog park or some other things that could potentially go in that area along with parking, if that could be part of that concept to getting those, that, that design work done.
I think it could be. There's, there's actually a lot more space there than you realize at first. There's a lot of it that's just kind of unusable, really, so.
Is that something to have as part of this, or does that not work for what you're looking to apply for?
You mean incorporate the section across the street as part of it? I guess we haven't really discussed that. We, we did talk a little bit about possibly some connections up with Snake Alley and including that, but I think we ultimately, just on the, the cost that we have, we're going to focus specifically on Nancy Navy Park, but I, I think with the idea that there's other connections, both directions, long-term, that we may need to look at, but I think our focus was going to be specifically on Nancy Navy Park.
Some of the design elements be pulled to other areas, though. If we look at every, a wall along Sixth Street or along the parking on behind Nancy Navy Park, maybe those could be translated to the area south of Valley Street.
Works some magic.
I just want to make sure that we get, I mean, as you start talking about a potential, I mean, a couple of the items that you mentioned in there, the one, the wall, that is another location that we could potentially look at having, and maybe be in a larger place where that could occur. You mentioned the water feature, that's going to be something that Charlie's going to be bringing up in a little bit with the Great Places project and the, along the riverfront, so there's, there's some components that may be potentially in here, but may have fits other places that are better.
All right, sounds like a good problem.
So they're incorporated.
Where'd we get you from, Batman? Good deal, good deal. You guys good?
Yep.
Okay. That brings us to number six, resolution approving the final plat of Benedict Acres subdivision.
This is a two-lot subdivision. This is just a location map up off of Golf Course Road, just to the east of the golf course, Flinell's Golf Course. This is one of the greens and tees on Flinell's Golf Course, so it's just to the east of that. It's a large area here, over 20 acres. They're looking to split into two, actually incorporate this house and the land to the east, separating from the remaining property. So currently, there's two lots, but they're just readjusting the lines so that this house here has the land to the east, and then the remaining is one large lot, so this kind of shows a little bit better, just a minor subdivision, two-lot subdivision, with Lot 2 being a little over eight acres and Lot 1 being over 18 acres, but no public infrastructure involved in this. But it is in the two-mile growth area in the county, so.
Council?
Good. No questions.
Number seven, resolution establishing solid waste fees. Jim?
I suppose I need to look at this. In your packet is a set of fees, a resolution establishing fees for the new cart system, based off of conversations that we've had over the last couple of months. So the three basic-tiered carts, the 30 gallon at $14.25, the 60 gallon at $17.50, the 95 gallon at $20.75. Our current price structure for the existing system is $14.25 a month, so that has that 35-gallon base cart fee being the exact same amount. Below it has the trash tags, selling those to local merchants at $3.90 apiece would allow them to be then sold, or they could sell them for $4. That'd be the same copter differential as what currently is there. We sell them for $1.95 apiece currently for a $2 tag. There's a, and then options in there for the additional carts, if people are looking to do an extra, a second 65-gallon cart or a second 95-gallon cart, $8 and $12 respectively for those. Those go into place for bills after November 1. We're looking for carts to be delivered about the first week of October, so that would have the, make, make sure that we're not billing people until they're in a position where they've gotten to where they have the new carts in place. Tags is something that, as we move forward, we have a significant amount of tags on hand. As Don was talking about it, the supplies for tags that we'd ordered was probably enough to get through next July 1. My recommendation would be that, and just talking with Stephanie, is whatever tags we have on hand, when we move to the new system, it's going to be the $4 for a new tag. Well, we're going to need a new, a different tag, probably a different color with a different statement on it, so it's clearly different from what our existing tags are. For customers who happen to have still the $2 tags, allow them to use, as we transition between these systems, if they have those on hand, use two $2 tags in place of a $4 tag to get out of them. Also have a process for, you know, when a retailer purchases tags from us, they're buying them for $1.95, they're buying them, some are buying just a, a couple of weeks' worth, some are buying several months' worth at a time, giving them the ability to be reimbursed and change out, and get, then get the new tags. And then my, my recommendation, I know it's a couple of thousand dollars for the cost of the tags that we have on hand, I, I'd rather just transition as soon as we can and get into the new tag structure. If we have a couple of thousand worth of tags that we're not using, get those destroyed and just get transitioned over as soon as we can, and know that it's not, we're going to have to have a little bit of patience, and we're going to have to work with our, folks that are picking up the garbage to make sure that they are working through that process, too. And we're just going to have to get a lot of information out there. The old tags, when we transition to that new system, are going to have to be using two, two for one, and as we get into them, we'll have to get the retailers switched out, and it'll just, there'll just be some transition time, or that first couple of months, we're probably going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be an issue for, for your haulers to pick up and make sure that things are working right, but...
Would you need to destroy the old ones, or could you do the, the two tags count until those are gone?
Residential can use the two tags, but I don't want to, I don't think it makes sense for us to be selling additional to the, to the retailers once we've, once we transition to the new system. We need to try to get switched over as soon as we can.
That's confusion that way.
Yeah, and we're going to be, we're going to be reminding people to, to be patient as we make a transition. Anytime you do anything new, there's going to be some, some bumps, but we'll, it's going to be better, it's going to be for the better, so we'll get to it.
Timing on this, next week, you've got a couple of you all going to be gone.
I will call in, and I'll make arrangements to call in, and I can be here.
So that we can get a vote on that?
Like to bump it to the front?
Yes, we can do that. All right, so then we can make sure that we get it, because one of the things, and the reason that we're wanting to make sure that we can do something on that, Don, to get this all through, has done way too much work. One of the...
No doubt, no doubt. Giving you something on that, Don.
Getting the survey out, he, he needs to be able to get them in a position where they can get that survey out and start to get the responses back, so they need the pricing structure established, so they know that everything is the way we've said it is. Anything else, Don?
Well, I did want to take this opportunity, being in the public eye, to note, I did have some conversations with our contractor last Thursday, last Friday, and it became evident that there was some confusion on the database, the list of customers that we provided them, which includes single-family homes, duplexes, threeplexes, fourplexes. They use that list to create their mailing list for the mailer-slash-survey that the city manager was just talking about, where the citizen will be, have the opportunity to select the size cart based on size and based on the price, and there were some, there was additional work that needed to be done on that list to make sure that everything was going to go smoothly, which I hope that it goes smoothly. Anyway, I guess what I wanted to say is, on the handouts that we've had available at the three sites where the carts are, have been looked at over the last few weeks, and will continue to be looked at, hopefully, there was a two-sided piece of information there that included the program timetable, which indicated that the mailer survey was to go live on Monday, August 13. And then it would be closed four weeks later, giving people four weeks the opportunity to fill out the postcard, or to go onto the city's website, click on a link that would take them to a site that they could make their, register their decision for their property on that site, as opposed to the postcard. Because of the confusion over the list and the need to resolve those, that confusion, we discussed it today, and they felt that, they felt a lot more comfortable with delaying the mailer survey going live instead of being on Monday, the 13th, to Monday, the 20th. Now, what that means is they'll start mailing the survey out probably the Thursday or the Friday prior to the 20th, and of course, in order for the citizens to have that in hand with the price on it, the fee has to be known ahead of time. Otherwise, that would push back, have to push it back even further, which is pushing us into the late fall, into weather issues as well as to the LEAF program. So the mailer, even though this information's been out there for a couple of weeks, the mailer survey will not go live until Monday, the 20th. The mailings we made the previous week, midweek, so it's in people's hands by the 20th. The website link will be active also on the 20th. Instead of having four weeks to register their decision, I feel that the three-weeks timetable is adequate. That'll keep the cart delivery on schedule for the last week of September, the first week of October. We anticipate all carts will be in the hands of the people by October, Saturday, October 6th, so we'll get a couple of weeks of cart collection before we get into the LEAF program.
Don, how do the people register their cart size that pay online?
Well, I haven't seen the website, the link, but... Well, I haven't seen the website, the link, but there will be on the mailer that each individual receives, and well, what I should say is, the mailer is going to the address that receives the water bill. It doesn't mean it's gonna be stuffed in a water bill, it means it's going to whatever, whatever the address is that receives the water bill. So if you're a landlord and you own a piece of property, the south end of town, but you, and you receive the water bill for that property, you will be the one that will receive the mailer, since you're paying the bill directly, and the tenant will not see that postcard. But on that postcard, it will have a specific ID number associated with every dwelling unit within that rental unit. So if it's a threeplex, the landlord will receive three postcards, each one with a specific ID number associated with the dwelling unit. And they'll have to fill out each of the postcards and return them through the mail, or they can go to the linked website, and they can enter that specific ID number associated with that dwelling unit, and then they would make their register, whether they wanted a thirty-five, a sixty-five, or a ninety-five.
Okay.
So tenants need to get ahold of their landlord and express their desire?
If the tenant does not receive the water bill and they have a desire for a particular-sized cart, they need to contact their landlord and express that.
Great.
And for people that-
And if you don't return it, you get a sixty-five delivered.
Yeah.
Which is what I like to see.
Yeah.
Go big Burlington, go big.
But remember, you wanna get your, your voice heard, so make sure you return that, that postcard. Otherwise, you get the sixty-five gallon, it's thirty-five dollars to switch out, so make sure your voice is heard.
That is one of the things that I did not read off of the resolution that establishes that thirty-five-dollar fee. Something that's come up, that's been a question asked of, I think, the nuisance department and then coming through Don, what happens with stolen carts? Different communities handle that differently, and it's not in this resolution. We'll probably, through a combination of changes to the ordinance, and if we need to do another resolution to establish a fee, we'll do that. The, the, the process that I saw that made the most sense, I think, was Fort Madison's. They do the first, the first cart that's, that's stolen from, or lost, or whatever, they replace without a charge, the city does. After that, there, there is a charge that goes to whoever's getting that bill.
What's Quad Cities doing, Jim?
They, I don't think they have ever do a charge, but I think that there should be a charge after the first one, and you don't bring up the Quad Cities.
Any idea what that replacement fee would be?
Um, you know, for, our carts are forty to fifty dollars, but we're buying them in bulk.
We bought, yeah.
And so I, I think we need to find out what the cost is gonna be over time, and I, I don't wanna have it to where we're making money off of it, but it should be at least as much as what the cost is to, to buy a replacement one, and, and probably with a little bit of wiggle room on top.
Yeah.
So my guess would be probably in that fifty-five-dollar range is a guess, but that's, that's something that we'll be, we'll be dealing with as time goes on. Now, my thought was, is that the, I don't know how the language would work, but for, say, a rental property, as long as you have one, one owner of that property, the first, and, and it's, the, the bill's going to the owner, and this is my kind of example, the first time that one turns up missing, it's free. The second time, an ongoing, it is gonna be a charge for a replacement cart until you have a change of ownership or a change of who the bill is going to. But we need to get language that the attorney buys off on, that, that the rest of us can actually understand and implement and communicate to the public on that. That's just something that we're gonna have to deal with as we move forward.
Sounds good.
So there not being a grace period for exchanging a cart for a different size, people need to get out to the sites and look at the cans, move them around, and get a feel for them, because we do not have a free or grace exchange period. It'll cost them money if they wanna make a change.
Right.
That's why, again, I encourage people, if you make trash and you still have people in the house like, like Annette, go big, go big. You're, you're gonna save money in the long run, and I'll tell you what, you won't have to, to hold on to stuff, you know, waiting for spring cleanup, that sort of thing, you can just get rid of it, rid of it, go big.
As long as it needs to-
Right, as long as you're allowed to dispose of it.
Doesn't mushroom out the top.
That's right.
It's not reinventing the wheel. I mean, every community around us has this cart program. I can't believe we're last. Burlington's normally pretty cutting edge.
We're not, we're not last, we're like third to last, so anyways, you guys good?
Yes.
So I can feel comfortable about the rates that we've discussed to this point, the thirty-five, sixty-five, and the ninety-five?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm voting yes.
Thanks, Don.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Don. Brings us to number eight, resolution approving contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for CDGB and SRF loan administration. Mr. McGregor?
This resolution would approve a contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning to do the administration for both CDGB and SRF. As a part of these two funding mechanisms, of which you just accepted the six hundred thousand dollars in CDGB funds last council meeting, is to fund for the locust separation project. There are requirements with these funding mechanisms, there's, there's wages, wage reports, actually, Mike, Mr. Norris, right over here, could probably tell you all the details of what those reporting things are, but in, in there, you'll see two different contracts, one for CDGB, which is thirty thousand to do the administration on, and then there's an SRF loan application for five thousand dollars. In order to meet compliance and, and get these things filled out properly, for the funding sources that we're gonna use, I recommend using or approving.
And there is a reason why the cost is different for the two. There's a lot more reporting requirements to go with CDGB than what goes with SRF.
But they both have wage requirements.
But they both have what?
Wage requirements. So the two different programs, CDGB's Community Development Block Grants, federal funds that flow through the-
TUD.
Through DNR.
Through IGEA.
And SRF State Revolving Fund is, is state funds to help with the finance at a low interest rate, two percent interest, plus a quarter percent fee, is that what it is now? For loans, this is a project that we're looking at about a-
Five point three mil.
Five point three million dollars. I think that the loan that we're gonna, we're gonna have to go through some, a process on the SRF yet, establishing an overall threshold cap of the price, I think it's gonna be six and a half million, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I thought it was seven two five.
Seven two five, thank you. That includes all the engineering fees, and it actually has a, since we don't know what our final bids are gonna be, we wanted to make sure that there is a cushion in it. And a tentative repayment schedule that goes with it. I think that what Travis was gonna be presenting with, when we get to that, will be a twenty-year repayment, pretty level payments.
Are, are they level, or is it a little high at the beginning, or, I mean, where does it?
I can't remember, is that one that it's the, that they do level premiums or payments, or do they do level principal with the interest on top? Do you remember?
I thought they were level payments, but-
I, I think it's level payments. 'Cause I, I, I know I looked at what he'd sent for a tentative schedule, I just, and I think it was level, but-
That sounds right, I'd have to look into it.
Okay. You guys good?
Good.
It's a lot of money, though.
It is a lot of money, the seven point two five billion dollar threshold. Wow.
Well, it'll, it should be less than that. We, we built in, that includes the, the grant funds that we're getting through, CDGB is six hundred thousand, but we wanted to make sure that we, when we go through, when we do go through the hearing process, that we have some flexibility to make sure that we've adequately covered the potential top amount.
Do you know what, do you know off the, off the top or estimate what that, what that average payment's gonna be around, on twenty years?
Twenty year, I wanna say in the five fifty, six hundred thousand range. You can work that up, Mike?
If you want me to.
You can, I think it's, I think it was in the five hundred fifty to six hundred thousand range.
That tells me pretty much what I need to know, all right. I was just curious where that was gonna be. Okay, you got any other bad news, Nick?
He will.
Not on this list.
He will.
You know, it's always a pleasure to talk to you, most of the time. All right, we good, guys?
Yes.
Okay. Number nine, resolution approving contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for assistance with consultant selection process for Tiger Grant.
As part of the Tiger Grant, we are required to go through these, the federal selection process to, to hire a consultant. In order to do that, we have to go through Form 10-
Three dot three oh five.
That thing. And it, it amounts to about fifty pages of hoops to jump through, and we have to follow that process. The, the contract in front of you is for three thousand dollars for Southeast Iowa Regional Planning to help us prepare that document, to try and access the seventeen million dollars, so.
Fifty pages?
I don't have, I don't have the staff time to be able to get that process, so, I mean, ideally, we'd like to do that in-house, but we have availability through the regional planning, so.
Nick's a busy man, he just doesn't have time for that.
That's not what I'm saying.
You guys good with that?
I'm good.
All right, sir, thank you. Let's move on to the proposed consent agenda. Number one's resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Good?
Good.
Number two is resolution establishing a no parking zone on the two hundred block of Spring Street. Nick?
There was a request by the property owner, it is, it's next to his driveway for a no parking zone on Spring Street, the two hundred block. It is on a dead end on the south side of the road. Upon my recommendation, there he goes, there's a map, there's, there's not much traffic down in there anyway, to, to make, improve the area, I know that we've, we discussed with the emergency services about accessing the property, my recommendation would just be to install the sign to, to encourage better access in that area.
It's just that highlighted area?
Yeah, just the twenty foot there. I think there's some neighborhood disputes going on there, but at the end of the day, if it creates the access, that's, that's needed to be necessary, I think that's fine.
Okay. You guys good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Number three is resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the state of Iowa to revitalize Iowa's South Economy, RISE, funds for a new roadway in the Flint Ridge Business Park.
This resolution here would approve the application for the RISE grant. This is, Eric threw up a map, and I can let Zach talk about it some. He's the preparer of the grant, but as you know, during the conversation in this area, we've talked about a couple of different roads and parking. This application is for the extension of the, of an unnamed road from West Burlington Avenue to the west, that would join with a future connection.
McCambe Drive, my friend.
I, I don't have that authority to name roads, so if that's something that you wish to choose to do.
Don't worry about particulars right now, Nick, you're starting to ruin the flow.
I didn't, I didn't wanna cause any problems.
That's why it was written that way in, on the agenda with that on there.
What?
That's why you had it on the agenda tentatively. We had to take that off last week.
I know we did. It was more of a, it was more of a joke to Kathleen, and I didn't, I don't-
It was really disappointing, just, just for the record. So anyways, please continue.
I digress. Anyway, so the, the RISE grant application is for the road section from east to west. We're showing in the application the north-south connection of the future Broadway extension. The, the RISE grant application is for the fifty-fifty match portion, I think it's called the local development, part of the application. It is a million dollars, seventy, or one million, seven hundred, or seventy-four thousand dollars, so we can, we're eligible for half of that, so five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars.
Five hundred and twenty-two.
Five hundred and twenty-two. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
A million forty-five, right on.
Correct. Half of, half of what I just said. So, this application is due on September first? Correct. And I don't know the time period of review. I think they'll just take them as they get them.
Probably around October, so.
So.
If we don't get it this time around, they do a six-month cycle on these, and-
Yeah, the next one's due February first.
So we'll be resubmitting it, essentially the same application.
A lot of times, once you submit, September first, they might even work with you on adjustments to the application, and maybe you don't fit like a normal repeat schedule, but you might get it for the next deadline.
This project was in our CIP plan, not for, let's see, this is, I think FY twenty, so the following, or twenty-one? It was, I know at least not this next construction cycle. It's been pushed forward a little bit, just because of the other work that's going on out in the, in the industrial park.
Were you, were you gonna say?
No, I was waiting for Jim to.
I just think it's important that we stick with the CIP and that we get McCambe Drive done. Any other questions, counsel?
I question the name, but yes, none other than that, no problem.
We did ask for some input from the chamber in regards to what, with it being out in the industrial park, if they had any recommendations for names, haven't had anything come back, but I, I don't know if they'll have any input, but they might, just for, I don't know if they will have that for consistency with other names out there.
No, I think McCambe works, I think everybody's pretty much satisfied with that, so we don't need to discuss it anymore. Do you guys have any other questions? I'm getting upset here, I'm getting upset here.
You're gonna be sorry when they name them.
You're out of order, Annie, you're out of order. Are we good?
Yeah.
I'm good, Anna.
We're good. All right.
No, I'm-
No, you're good?
No, no, it's okay.
Okay. Number four, resolution approving contract with Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission for Burlington Urban Service Planning Assistance. Mr. McGregor?
This is a, is a resolution approving a contract with Regional Planning to assist myself in the transit planning area. As you know, I'm part-time transit manager, twenty percent of my salary and time is supposed to be spent in transit. Unfortunately, in the day-to-day, twenty percent of my time is not spent in transit. And so what this contract would approve or do is, is have Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, they have, they restructured, and they have, they have a little bit more availability to help with transit, mobility-type planning. They would do some survey work, some, some route analysis, some of the analytical work that I'm not able to perform on a regular basis, just because I'm trying to keep the wheels going. So I would greatly appreciate some assistance in the transit arena. I think, I think we've suffered some in transit, just because we're not able to take a look at our, our system and understand the ways it's working and not working, and adapt that to make it one more efficient and maybe more effective, and, and getting the people where they need to go, maybe some additional routes, maybe lessening routes, extending hours, reducing hours, you know, things like that. So my recommendation would be to approve it to, to help me with some, with some assistance.
Is that, so is this for, is this into perpetuity? Is this for-
This is one-year contract, but I would, I mean, I would greatly appreciate more than one year, but I, for right now, it's just a one-year contract.
For some context with this, too, two thousand twelve, when we started going through the process of revamping everything and trying to figure out how we're rightsizing and getting to where we could have a balanced budget, one of the things that came up, actually, I guess in the two thousand thirteen budget development process, was the position that was halftime transit manager, halftime-
Rightaway manager.
Rightaway manager.
Something like that.
When that, when that went through, when, when he left, we just, that was one of the recommendations for not refilling that in order to try to get to a balanced budget. So this has really been a, an area that's been difficult ever since then. The Transit Department would certainly recognize that they've, they're, I mean, that, there are a lot has gone down from what used to be done by that person, not necessarily up to Nick, but down to the, the day-to, more the day-to-day staff, and everybody's had to sort of fill in, and they, they've done a great job at it, but this is something that certainly has fallen between the cracks and not getting done as well as it could. There's just not enough time.
I've got no beef, counsel?
No, I learned when I attended the Citizens Academy that this was a shortage, that this has been a need for a long time.
Okay. All right, let's move on to number-
I did wanna say the RISE application, do you charge us for that? That's part, and why is that? We want, you wanna say how that fits in with, with your services, just to give it, so the counsel understands where that fits in?
Evening, Mike Norris, I'm the Executive Director of Southeast Iowa Regional Planning. Reason that we don't charge for the grant applications is because the annual member dues that our- dues that our member cities and counties pay to us go towards matching grants that pay for us to do this type of work. So RISE applications, the CDBG project we just talked about, the Great Places, Nancy Navy Park, all covered under member dues. So it honestly makes us very happy to work on grants. It's a sign of, you know, progress, I think, for the region that our members want to seek out grants, and it's also money that's competitive. So if we're not applying for it from Southeast Iowa, from Burlington, someone else is. So we want to be your grant writer and write a lot of grants, and we appreciate your membership.
We like how you guys write.
We appreciate your grant writing.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Okay. Number five is resolution rescinding the sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland?
This, we had a conversation with the winning bidder, I guess, the day after the purchase at the recent council meeting. Had some concerns about ability to move forward with the project. As an individual that hadn't actually been in the property and wasn't fully aware of all the requirements to rehab the property, didn't have the, I think, financial means to move forward with that, so we wanted to make sure we weren't stringing out the process or making them suffer through that process as well. So did return the purchase price and did receive a letter from them stating they wanted to rescind or terminate their purchase. So this process would be rescinding the sale of the property, making it official. There is attachment to that with the... They had signed a letter stating they had that desire as well. We have had three others still have interest in it and would like to purchase the property, so do have this as a set date for hearing again for August 20th. And the 50-plus that we've sold, this is, I think, the first one that kind of has come to this where they weren't fully aware and thought they could just buy a property and move in and work on it as the money became available. But that's not the process for these homes. They're in a condition that they need to be rehabbed before they can actually move in, so we want to make that, especially from staff level, especially clear before people are bidding on them, that they cannot move in until they are rehabbed. And most of them take anywhere from $10,000 to $30,000 to rehab these homes, so they are in need of that work.
So I know this doesn't happen very often. We don't have... We don't clip their wings a little bit when they rescind on a property?
This is one that we knew that night that it wasn't in a position to do it, so we called them back in the next day, because it was evident they didn't understand what was going to be required before they moved in. And as we talked with them about what was required, they realized that there was...
I'll make sure I do a better job with...
They knew they had to back out.
I'll make sure I do a better job with... Before we do with the properties and everybody...
This individual's currently renting and living in a lower-income housing, subsidized housing as well, and just wasn't fully aware to understand the process. We have had some that have bid on it that are fully aware and might not follow through, but this individual just wasn't fully aware of the process and what was all required, and we didn't want to take advantage of that, so.
Yeah, it's going to make somebody a lovely home, so we'll just auction it off again. 1003 Chalfont Street. Those that are watching, if you're interested, make sure you drive by and check it out, get all the information that you need. It's going to be phenomenal home for somebody, so. You guys good?
Yep.
Yes.
Number six is a resolution approving membership in the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program. Chief?
So I asked for this to be put on the agenda. It will allow us to have access to competitively bid contracts for different kind of equipment, services, fire engines, ambulances, turnout gear, radios, that kind of thing. Save us some time and some money instead of sending out bids for certain things, or you can just use it to comparison shop. It also meets the state requirements for competitive bidding, so it doesn't cost anything to join, just need your approval to do so. In all the city departments will have access to the same list of goods.
Was this like a Sam's Club or something for us?
Yeah, there's... It's a cooperative purchasing. There's several different groups that do it, but...
You have to sing Glink Campbell songs.
This seems to be the...
Galveston.
Yeah.
We're a member of a couple of different ones already. As an example, the carts that we are ordering are being done through a... Do you know which one?
U.S. Communities.
U.S. Communities Alliance. Is it Alliance or just U.S. Communities? But it's the same type of a forum where they've gone out and done a competitive bid process already on products that then there are people who are entities such as us that join the U.S. Communities Alliance, then are able to take advantage of having had those bids done. This will just create a different network of...
Okay. You have me at no cost. Stupid and easy. All right. Number seven, we have set dates for public hearings for August 20th. First is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 311 South 9th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland, anything on that?
No, just...
I'm going to roll through them. Just stop me if you need to fill three. B is consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1906 Melvin Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Oh, that's going to be nice. C is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, so come on back down for that. D is consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 3129, being an ordinance creating the DeWalled Plaza PUD, Planned Unit Development, by making changes to Section 3B land use design criteria and Section 5, 50-foot buffer park. Number E is consideration of a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, for use of the fields at the Burlington Regional Reclex.
We did want to point out this.
We did get language back from attorneys on this, just based on the initial request from CISA, and wanted that in the packet so you could initially review that. I know we had discussion, and then some sent the memo out on just what some others are being charged as well, but the agreement does leave blank the number of years. I know there's some discussion, their desire is for 10 years. There is some concern about length of that, whether it be five years more appropriate with another renewal. So that is currently blank. Their initial request for 10 years was just based on their growth of their program and wanting to ensure whether their staff turnover or other turnover, that they can continue to rely on those fields to grow their program and have those available for their practices and different trainings they do. In the agreement under item four, and this is in the packet again, they talked about a $20,000 contribution fee over the 10-year period. This kind of breaks that down and has language on how that would actually work with... For each year, the agreement is in effect, CISA will incur a contribution fee of $2,000. So that builds every year, and as they make contributions that are mutually agreed by the city and the reclex, that that would be deducted from that total. So one thing, on our end, we don't want them to go out and just purchase something and say, this is our contribution that's not beneficial to the reclex as a whole. They've installed some lighting, some irrigation, bought some soccer goals. Some of it, they've gotten soccer goals that we weren't aware of until they were brought out to the complex. We just want to make sure we're having those conversations ahead of time. They've installed lighting that is beneficial for their practices but not beneficial for tournaments. It's not tournament quality, so we want to make sure those items that they're donating or would count towards a contribution if that's how this moves forward is something that is beneficial to the reclex as a whole, not just them individually. So that language is in there as well. But those are the things I wanted to point out. Again, just for reference, we do charge baseball, softball, practice rates, $25 a field for like the explosion, the Vipers, the Mud Dogs. That's per time they practice. SEC now practices and has games out at the reclex as well, and they're $6,000 to $6,500 annually to use that. They are on the interior fields that are more highly maintained, so that it reflects that, that they are using our fields that are a more highly maintained area versus these that are not in our fenced area. They are improving in quality, but they're not the quality of the interior field. So I did send that for reference. They'll be, over a 10-year period, they'd be charged $60,000 for... To $65,000 for use of those interior fields, just to compare what others are charged.
The council, I mean, you... The request came forward with the 10-year agreement. There was some within the council that would have liked to see in the five years, but I don't think that was a desire necessarily from the council as a whole, but that was something that was left in question from the council. As you dealt with the attorney on this, he had concerns about doing a 10-year agreement. Now, I mean, I think he's just concerned about locking up something for that long a period of time.
I thought we did have enough to warrant looking at the five-year, because I know that I was open for that. 10 years is a long time.
It was five.
We weren't sure where... Well, we weren't sure where you were, so that's why you see this with a blank, and I don't think there was a consensus to push it down to five to, I think, CISA left here thinking that it was... That their 10-year request was still intact. I think would that be...
I thought it was true.
I think there's some discussions about an automatic renewal after five, which essentially would be 10, or whether... I mean, there's just a couple of different thoughts there, so we didn't want to put something in that council wasn't comfortable.
That's what I recall, was the five with the five-year option after...
Mutual consent?
Mutual consent. If we had an issue, then we would stop.
Does that seem fair to make that the language, so if you need to adopt or amend it a little bit, Eric, to...
The question then would be how that $20,000 plays. Is that a 10-year? Is that a five-year? Do they have to meet that at five, or is it $20,000 each five-year? Comparison to SEC, it is substantially less. They do bring in tournaments as well, so there's a bunch of different factors there to consider. Just... So that's why that's underlying.
This is solely on the practice fields, I'm sorry, right? Solely on the practice field. So they bring a tournament, and they're paying for that?
Their tournaments are done separately from that, yes.
Okay, so this is just the practice field.
And part of what Eric has looked at for what they've... Your cost to operate this field are... About how much, Eric, annually?
I think it was... I'd have to look at that again. I think it was around $2,500 annually.
Between electricity, I think that was close to about $1,000 annually, and then you have mowing and the water and some of the...
Just general fertilizer and grass seed is around $25,000, or $2,500 annually that we... Our cost is just...
And we do get some benefit, but if you look at the usage of these fields, I mean, 90% of the usage or higher is them. So, I mean, we should be trying to at least cover our costs for the maintenance and upkeep of what they're... Essentially, is their usage of it.
And SEC's cost is practice as well, but they're practicing internal to the field, and they have a couple of needs as well.
Yeah, but my only point on that was that I do remember is that we do have to cut the grass. I mean, that's an automatic. We're going to have to cut the grass regardless of whether they're practicing there or not. But I do want it back to that five-year. I do believe that we...
So do you cut the...
To 10?
That they have to do $10,000 worth of improvements, or do you leave it at that 20?
No, I...
That's kind of... That's something that...
That's what your question... Yeah, that's what the question is. The improvements they've made so far were somewhat capital to get it up and running, so it's going to be more of a maintenance right now at this point, right, unless they decided to do...
Well, I think they had plans to do more...
They talked about buying additional equipment out there.
Yeah, they did talk about additional, so...
Which I would still like to see the language where, again, that they just don't go out and buy new balls and throw that at us and make sure that we're good on that. But are we... Are you guys at that five-year 20, or five-year... 10-year 20, or five-year 10? Are you guys...
It would be the five-year with just a quick, you know, whatever we had just...
The tough part is, we're not running this with them here present.
Right.
And it's just something that Eric can work with them over the course of the next week or two to find out where they fit with things. But, I mean, what they had come and presented was they were looking to do about $20,000 with a capital of equipment expenditures out there. And in turn, they felt that was adequate for the 10-year lease. Now, I don't know if you can... If you feel like they should have... If you're doing a five-year lease with the option to renew for an additional five years upon mutual consent, if they feel that that's an adequate trade-off for it or not, and that's something that Eric... If that's what you want to have written away in here, he can leave it that way, but he can also then work with them to make sure that they're okay with that, or there's going to be some strong objections that they want to raise with you.
I think the majority of the council was at the five and five.
And still leave that $20,000 of improvements that they've kind of committed to to get that five and five?
Yep.
Are maintenance costs going to improve greatly, Eric, over the years? I mean...
Well, that's kind of unforeseen. If these become fields that are maintained at a higher level, our costs would go up. If there's a dry year, or we have additional... We're watering these fields now that we weren't when we started, and...
Work it out, man. Work it out.
That's kind of the question on... I mean, we're not covering just the general maintenance cost and making sure the improvements are for the reclex as a whole, not just solely beneficial to them. And we have to look at what we charge everyone else, and this is substantially lower, but they... There's the cost benefit there, so.
I think it's a good partnership, and I want to continue it. I'm just... I'm not hung up on the five or 10 thing. I just want to make sure that we're covering our maintenance costs and everything.
Well, I want to make sure that there's some level of consensus amongst you, and then we get a chance to go back to them and make sure that there aren't any major hangups before you get too far down the road with doing the public hearing on the details of the lease.
Because I... Let me ask you that. I don't remember. I don't remember. I remember the conversation. I remember the five and five, but I don't remember the $20,000. So I guess my question would be, is that enough?
That was what they had proposed.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Is that...
I do remember the 20,000.
Okay.
I think in the past, they put like $17,000 of stuff in that memory comes to mind.
Okay. Yeah, I would probably be more... I'll tell you right now, I'm going to be more for a five with a renewable five at mutual consent. That protects us going down the road.
Right on. Okay. Brings us to F, consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 97, industrial pretreatment requirements in the City of Burlington Municipal Code. All right. Discussion items. I'm going to start with number four. I know you've got some things to do, so Victor, would you like to come forward and give some information on the block party?
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Good evening. Yeah, I'd like to get this promoted more, and I'd like to thank everybody who's aboard of this.
Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Victor Moore, and I'm head organizer of B-Town Block Party that goes on here in Burlington, which is gather up area kids to come out and be a part of this organization. And what we do, we put on... Do games, excuse me, games prizes, and most of all, it's about leading these kids to Christ, you know, and then get to know Christ and, you know, try to get them in Bible-based church, you know, get them into a church and stuff, you know, and have fun with them and everything, teach them the ways of life, you know, try to, you know, get them going on the right track, you know, so. And I want to go ahead.
Does it have anything to do with throwing water, ice water on the mayor? Because that's what happened last week, and I don't remember reading anything about that on your little paper.
It's all part of funny games, so.
I had a good time.
Yeah, but I want to get this promoted more, and what it is right now, it's going real good, and I want to try to get it more promoted next year, going good next year, and get more people aboard on this, more area churches aboard on this next year. And thank all the churches that are part of this right now, New Life, Baptist Church, of course you, yourself, and, let's see, My Church, First of 78 God, and Grace Methodist Church. And I'd like to see more coming aboard and more other organizations. We got ads that are coming aboard this year and being a part of it, and I've been getting phone calls from others wanting to come in and be a part of this. And it's a great... It's a great thing for these kids during the summer while they're out of school, and, you know, and it's something they can go back to school and tell what they did while they were out for the summer, you know. So I just want to try to get this promoted more and get more churches involved and get it more into the media and everything. it more into the media and everything, and let them know what's going on in the city of Burlington, you know, so.
I'd like to see, the reason why I wanted you to come down is, I'd like to see not just more churches, but more people in the community.
More people in the community come out and put their input into it, you know.
Absolutely. This, questions, when is the last, when is the last day for block party?
The last day, well, let's talk, went around and talked to some of the leaders, and they said, well, for one, Sanderson Park and Stonegate Park, they're going to be ending theirs on the ninth, and...
The what?
The ninth.
The ninth. And Edwin Gladys White Park is the park where I'm at, they're going to end it on the 16th.
Of September?
Of August.
August.
So, the Sanderson Heights, the last one, is the ninth of August?
Yes.
Kids got to go back to school.
Yeah.
There's some parents out there doing their happy days.
Yes. Well...
How long has this been going on?
It's been going on, this has been going on for some years, and I've been, I just took, I took over probably about, maybe, probably about, I've been in this position now this for about three years now. So I took over for Dave Selman, which, he was the head of it, and he asked me would I step in and take over him, and he's moving on to better things. And I said, yeah, I would. So, and I've been doing a great job at it, you know, and getting kids out, getting flyers out and everything, and been going around, putting them up in businesses and everything, too. So I've been going door-to-door, you know, putting them indoors, giving them the kids, letting them know what is going to be going on during the summer. But it's been kind of hard to get into the school system. You got to go through so much paperwork and get this, to get it approved and everything and stuff, so just found another way to do this, you know, so. But I would like to see this get more bigger and get more people in the community involved in this, you know, including the parents, you know, the parents that come out and see what the kids, what their kids are doing and what we're doing with the kids.
So if another church wanted to get involved, or parents or students wanted to get involved, who can they contact? What do they do?
They can contact me. My name is on my flyers, is on my flyers, and my telephone number, just as well as my wife, if they can't get a hold of me.
Do you want to say that out loud for the listeners on TV?
Well, I said, well, they can get a hold of me just as well as my, as my telephone number is on the flyer, just as well as my wife's number, but I can't get contacted. I work mornings, work like from four to two in the morning, so.
How would somebody have access to see this flyer?
Well, I can get the flyers. Right now, I have some down in my van, too. Also, I have flyers down in my van, also. I forgot to bring them up, because I was rushing to get here, so I wouldn't be making...
Can kids just show up on Saturdays?
Yes, I can.
And what's the time? The times?
From six to, from six to eight on Thursday?
Six to eight, every Thursday.
Okay, why did I think it was Saturdays?
I don't know.
I don't know. I guess I wasn't like semi-listened. Sorry.
It's Thursday. I want to say this.
Every Thursday from six to eight.
I'm encouraging anybody that's listening, if you want to come out and be a participant, you want to help out, this Thursday, we're having pizza at Sanderson Heights, and then the last Thursday, which would be next Thursday, this coming Thursday, it's all the pizza you can eat. I'm ordering up pizza that people can just eat. I told the kids, I'm going to let them eat pizza, roll around on the ground, get sick and get up and eat more pizza. So, come on out and let's have a good time, and let's have some pizza and enjoy each other's company. We'll play the frisbee and whatnot. I'm even bringing water balloons on the last one. So, the three locations are?
There's three locations, Stonegate Park, which used to be Greenway, Stone Garden, let me see, Stone Gardens, Edwin Gladys White Park on Engler, and Sanderson Park.
On Valley Street, on Valley and Marshall, so.
Yeah, so it's, like I say, and I'm going to get the community involved, lead these kids down the right road, and, you know, be disciples to these kids, just as well as Jesus was a disciple to his people, you know, so.
I would just like to remind people, the kids that you spend time with today and invest in, you're investing in your own, your own well-being, you're investing in your own community, investing in your own life. So, I know people say, well, I don't have kids or whatever, but what affects one around you, it does affect you, so you can make a difference there. I want to thank you for coming down. You got anything else you want to add before?
I'd like to see the city come out and see what was going on, see how things have been, how things are going on in the community, and how we run things, how we do things out here, and be well-acted with the kids.
All right. Just like to invite the chief of police to Sanderson Park.
I've been reaching out to the department.
I got a piece, I got a slice of pizza waiting for you, if you show up.
Yeah, I've been reaching out to the police department also, and been reaching out to the fire department just as well, to come out and showing them the firehouse and everything like that, too. So, I've been wanting them to come out and everything, and check, and getting the kids a good tour and everything.
Very well, very well. Victor, thank you for coming down, and thank you for all that you do in our community. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you for having me.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Can we get a treasures report? Number one. Annette, come on down. Annette, class of 87, she's a grayhound. She's a good girl.
Okay, in your packet is June's preliminary treasure report. So this is, as of June 30th, before we've done transfers or accrued anything back. So this is going to change over the next couple of months as we accrue things back through the end of August, first part of September, when we get our last hotel motel payment. So like, if you're going down, like the general fund, we're going to make transfers of about 3 million that we know of into that fund. Same with debt service is negative right now, but that's because the transfer hasn't been made in there, and it's approximately 1.3 million. And then, on the second page of the treasure report, vehicle maintenance and property maintenance, those will all be trued up at the end, when we're done accruing back expenses and revenues. And I'd say the same thing with the golf course, they had some tournaments that took place in June, so there'll be some receipts that go back to that, and some transfers for equipment purchases and things, so. There's going to be a lot of changes between now and the next couple of months.
You guys good? Do you see anything you're concerned about?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Nope. Do you have anything, Jim?
General fund, I think, is on track to be at a little, right around that 15% range. I'm not sure if we'll be up, we're budgeted to be up 140,000, I think, on the year, and we're, I mean, we have to wait until everything goes through.
We have, yeah, it's really hard to say. I think we're going to be...
I mean, right now, I'm guessing at about 170 to maybe higher.
Yeah, I just, I mean, the next couple of days, I'm going to be accruing back the receipts for the month of July that belong to June, and so we'll have a better idea.
You'll still have ambulance receipts, and there's a few others that get done during August yet, so it's hard to know where the final number is. But we're, we should do as, at least as well as what budget was.
Yes, I would agree with that.
At least.
Yes. All right, thanks.
You guys good?
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Annette. And Stephanie? All right, discussion item number, number three. Do we have a presentation tonight?
Nutrient reduction.
Yes.
Nutrient reduction strategy?
Certainly do. We had to hire an inexpensive firm to come and do a study for us.
We love inexpensive. I like you already.
Why did we have to do this study to begin with? What's, what was driving the need to do this?
Well, I'm Mike Haldi with HR Green. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Sure. So, we'll get into that, what the reason for this is. But we've been working over the last year with Don and his staff to collect data and to get this report presented and given to the IDNR as an NPDS requirement. So, what I want to talk about tonight, and I'll try and be as brief as possible, respectful of your time, but, you know, what the need is of the study, it's NPDS-driven, so what your discharge permit, what the regulators say that you need to do. What strategy are we taking? What did we look at as part of this evaluation? How it's going to impact your existing treatment plant, your wastewater plant, and the bad part, the capital costs and the O&amp;M costs that are going to be associated with that, and then also the implementation schedule. So, the need for the nutrient reduction strategy, and to answer your question, Jim, is the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy was a partnership by the Department of, Iowa Department of Ag and the DNR to look at nutrient discharges into Iowa rivers, and then ultimately into the Mississippi River as well. You may or may not have heard of the Gulf Epoxya, where there's a dead zone, and this is going towards improving that situation. So anyway, that partnership and the nutrient strategy was established in 2013, and IDNR rolled that into NPDS permits as they were renewed. And so, your city NPDS permit was renewed in June of 2016, and as of that permit, you were to do this feasibility study within two years of that permit issuance. So that's what really drove this, the need for our work.
And plus, you were inexpensive, remember?
Sure.
Thank you, Mike.
So the, again, the target requirements of this are a 10-milligram per liter total nitrogen and 1-milligram per liter of total phosphorus. So removing nitrogen and phosphorus. So that's the key thing. So, a couple of approaches that are suggested for these types of studies, first is to try and see if you can reduce the contributors. Who's giving you nitrogen and phosphorus, and can you take those out at the source? Well, there's, you really don't have any significant contributors of those. The data that we had obtained from Don showed that they're, you know, your wastewater is typical domestic wastewater, generally. So, and then the other approach is to optimize the existing wastewater treatment plant. So, are there improvements at the plant that we can do by operational means, or running it differently to remove that total nitrogen and total phosphorus? So, currently, your plant removes total nitrogen, total phosphorus at the primary clarifiers, which were installed as part of the last improvements project in 2010, and then also biological uptake in the main component of the treatment plant, the activated sledge park. And what we found is that there's really no further optimization that can be done.
Our plant is running that good?
It runs pretty good.
That's right, Don.
So, this little table kind of spells it out, too. There's, you know, the constituents that generally make up your plant are on the left, BOD, TSS, ammonia. The bottom two are the ones that really are captured by this Iowa nutrient reduction strategy, the TN and TP. So your current permit has BOD and TSS removal requirements. Your actual, how the plant operates, you're removing BOD, you're removing TSS, you're removing ammonia, and you're getting some phosphorus reduction. So you're getting some marginal reduction, meaning that Iowa reduction strategy. And then with that last column, and apologize for the misspelling, I don't know, that's right. So you can see what else we needed to do. So as part of this study, we need to reduce total nitrogen and total phosphorus. So, we looked at new additional treatment technologies, what things would we have to do at that plant for improvements to reduce, first one, nitrogen. So, you know, creating environment, biological nitrogen removal, creating an environment within that plant to get that nitrogen uptake and out, so it doesn't get discharged to the river. So we looked at three options. First is modified Ludzak-Etiger process, MLE is what we'll call it from here on out, but it's a, just a biological process with mixing and pumps and just creating that environment. The second one we looked at was cyclical aeration, so again, creating that environment, just a different way of doing it. And then the last one is adding some additional components into that main treatment process to get those constituents removed. So, you know, all of it is adding equipment, adding process, but which one is the most effective? And that was the MLE, the top one that's highlighted there.
Is that the most expensive, too?
No, it was not. The main thing was, is that we were able to reuse almost all the tankage that you had. We wouldn't have to build new tankage. So we can do all of this within your existing plant processes, other than, whereas the other two needed some additional tankage. So then the last component is phosphorus removal, removing phosphorus. Couple options are biological phosphorus removal, again, creating that environment. Then the second alternative was chemical phosphorus removal, so adding chemicals, getting that to precipitate and fall out, essentially removing it from the liquid stream with ferric chloride or alum, or the chemical constituents typically used. The biological one, we would have to add tankage, and to create that environment, add pumps, add piping, so a little more chemical or capital cost.
Let me go back. What's the, what's the ferric chloride alum?
Those are...
This is what we're adding to take out?
Those are chemicals that you would add. That's right.
We're adding chemicals to remove chemicals.
That's right. That's right.
Oh, just the sound of that, just, you know, all right.
So, again, the biological option was more capital intensive. The chemical option is more O&amp;M intensive, so buying the chemicals, those types of things. And typically, the amount of phosphorus that's in your waste stream is relatively low, favoring the chemical option. So, impacts to your existing treatment units, so what you currently have there to implement the MLE process and the chemical phosphorus removal. On the liquid side, really, there's not a lot of impact, because we could do it all within your existing tankage. We would have to add some components, which we'll get to here in a minute. The second item there is in the solid stream, so as you remove the things out of the liquid process, you have these residual elements that you've got to take care of. And because we're creating more by having to remove those, we need more process, more elements to be able to take care of that. And that would be a new digester, and we're, as we've discussed so far with Don, we're roughly at about 40-foot diameter would be the minimum that would be needed. So we'd have to implement that on his site. We would also have...
What's the size of the digester that we have currently?
It's 75.
Yep. So then the, there would be electrical upgrades as well. There's mixing and pumping that we'd have to incorporate to create those environments. So how this lays out in your plant, yeah, there. So, the main process tankage on the site is, are the activated sledge tanks. So that's where we'd be incorporating this MLE, which would be the nitrogen removal, would happen biologically in these tanks. We would add chemical in the clarification tanks, which would remove the phosphorus, and then it would go out into the Mississippi River after that, once those elements are all removed and we're meeting permit. Couple elements for the, on the solid side would be a new digester. Here's the 75-foot digester that you currently have. We'd be adding at least a 40-foot and maybe larger than that. And that would be something that would be determined in final design. And then to support the chemical phosphorus removal, we'd have a chemical storage building located probably close proximity to the clarifiers.
Is that a, is that a situation where we may need to treat that like the trash cans and just go bigger right off the bat?
On the digester?
Yeah.
I would be very surprised if you would do a 40-foot one. I would guess it'll be a larger one.
I bet.
Yep. So I think you're right.
Okay, Mike.
And then summary of the recommendations, and really, these are the elements that kind of roll up to the, to the cost that we're going to get to here in a minute. But again, pumps, and I don't want to go through all of these, but I wanted to at least have it in the packet so that you would have kind of that executive summary to capture all of those items. So they're broken down by the nitrogen, MLE process, the chemical phosphorus removal, what would be needed, and then the digester. So, capital and O&amp;M costs, again, at this level of a cost estimate, there's quite a bit of contingency in here. And as, you know, as obviously more details get worked out, we would be able to define that a little bit more. Again, wanted to be on the high side, obviously with the higher element of contingency. Again, wanted to be on the high side, obviously with the, with the higher element of contingency. So about $5.9 million roughly. The last bullet item, and not to try and hide this, but there is O&amp;M costs for, with this, chemical and electrical items. And that would be, in very conservative estimate at this point, is $300,000. Now, I think, I, I know that'll come down. About 140,000 of that is chemicals, and the rest of it would be electricity. We do, there is one benefit to this process in that with, with the biological nutrient removal, we do get some credit as, in some reduced amount of blowers that you would need to run, and that has not been figured into this. So there's probably a $40,000 to $60,000 credit of blower running operations that you, that would come off of this.
Mike, is there a, is there any chance at all that doing biological removal, is that possible?
For phosphorus?
Yes.
It, it is possible, sure.
Okay. Is there a chance that doing the biological removal will be cheaper in the long run than going this route?
Based on the low phosphorus that you've got in your influence? And usually, our threshold is about six milligrams per liter. When you're below that, it's more cost-effective to go chemical. And if it's above that, and you're below that, you're about four, four and a half.
Would your ratios ever change over time? Or would they pretty much stay consistent?
They do, but we check them periodically. And that's the latest is, is that ratio. So the, the other item, too, is the, the schedule for this. And again, we had a two-year from when the permit was issued to get this feasibility study done, which was due June of this year, June of 2018. As part of that, we did ask the DNR through a letter or through a request as part of the feasibility study that because of all the other improvements the city's doing with the separations and the integrated planning, those elements, if we could have, and master planning, if we could have more time to really work these costs through and look at the affordability elements and, and drive the schedule based on that and recommend that schedule at the end of this year. And they wrote back and they, they approved that. So we really have until the end of this year to get that finalized. So once we get more definition of the master plan and other costs that you guys are going to be faced with, we'll be able to roll that in there and try and set it as favorable for the, for the city as possible. To give you an idea, and we don't have dates to this, again, wanted to put it in the packet just to give you an idea what all goes into the process. But roughly, once we get that approval of the, of the feasibility study from the, from the DNR, it's probably a five to seven-year process to get this ultimately to construction. And that, and that would be the soonest. So, you know, if we ask for a longer timeline because of costs or those types of things, I think that would definitely be an approach that, that you could take.
Counsel, questions for Mike?
So Mike, a lot of the runoff, oh, go ahead. Somebody had one back.
I was just going to kind of point out, item 16 in the sequence, I think that's important to note, too, that the DNR doesn't issue limits to permanent after you've prepared these.
Yeah, there's a, there's kind of a trial period, operations and data, operations and data collection period. Once it's, once the construction would be done, to optimize it as much as possible and get that target, target permit levels and what is achievable for total nitrogen and phosphorus. And then once that data is collected, you get six months until the actual permit is So there's, once the construction's done, you're actually, you have some, and it's probably more for Don's benefit to, you know, getting, it's a new process, getting into that mode-
You have six months to-
You get, you get a year and a half roughly to get that implemented and finalized before they're going to start saying, hey, this is what your permit is.
Okay, okay.
So next steps are, you know, master plan completion. Obviously, we'll be involved in how flows are going to be handled and how the separation is going to be managed and what the result of that separation is. Defining that schedule better towards the end of the year, once the master plan is, is closer to completion. And then working with Jim and others to, to look at user rates and affordability and those kind of things, so. And then we'll finalize it.
Questions?
This, this in and of itself, if you look at a $6 million project and $300,000 annual O&amp;M cost on a, our sewer plant now operates on about a $6 million annual budget. That's effectively to pay for the debt service on that and to take on that additional O&amp;M is a 10% rate increase in and of itself. So think in terms of, this is a significant thing. I don't know that there's any way to, that we're going to be in a position to be talking to DNR and asking them to continue to work with us on a 3% annual rate increase, given that we're working on the sewer separation issues, as well as this, this thing that is in and of itself a 10% rate increase. This is another one of those mandates that is not of, an enjoyable deal. And we'll be working with DNR to try to see what we can get done. But I don't think it's going to be realistic to think that we're going to be in a position to say we're moving forward long-term with that 3% rate increase schedule. And I know that people don't like even a 3% rate increase. None of us do. But the mandates that we have here are well above and beyond what we can accommodate within what our rate structure is. And that's really the reason I wanted to make sure that we had this discussion here.
Well, thanks for asking me to come and give this, because it's a big, it's a big deal.
So Mike, I'm familiar with the dead zone and all that, but so where the primary source of phosphorus and nitrogen is coming from? Farm runoff, rain? How is it-
All, all of the above.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously, in the, from your perspective, it's a point source, is what it's called. And then from the ag side, it's a non-point source. So it's just, you know, something that comes out of the pipe versus what runs off the, the land. And it comes from all of the above.
Okay.
So phosphorus is in detergents, is in multiple things.
Is there anything in the future, in your opinion, we can do to reduce our, our load in our city in Burlington?
The, I mean, obviously, it's generally in every, it's in sewage and sanitary waste. So, you know, it's, to, to have a really effective reduction is difficult because you've got to get-
Quit washing our clothes and quit using the bathroom. I got you.
Yeah, well. And you've got to have it across the board.
Okay. So permeable pavements and more green space and stuff, does that help a little bit or not significantly?
Some of that would help a little bit.
Okay.
And if you can define those. I know that there's been some approaches where people are looking at trading credits and some of that thing, but that's, that's difficult to, to do as well. But definitely something that's, that's an option.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And, and you're not the only ones in this boat. I mean, every, every town that has flows above 1MG, or 1 million gallons a day, on average, is, is in the same.
Top 95, is it right? Somewhere in that neighborhood, communities in the state-
Yeah.
Are subject to these same rules.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Thanks.
Don't say I like them, but what do you do? Mike, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And thanks for the extra information. It's appreciated. Counsel, are we good? All right. Next is number three, SIRPC Neighborhood Revitalization Projects. Mike Norris.
Hello again. This will not cost you nearly as much.
Thank you, Mike.
Just wanted to update the council on a couple of properties that one of our partner nonprofits purchased. Just to explain that relationship, Regional Planning Incorporated, Southeast Iowa Housing Inc. is a nonprofit developer of infill properties in southeast Iowa. We did that about six years ago. And this is a separate corporate entity from Regional Planning, but we operate it through an independent board. So basically, our staff is their staff, vice versa. Housing Inc. completed its first home in Burlington with a city auctioned property recently, and we also purchased another property. So I'm going to update you on those two properties. And we're also doing this in other parts of southeast Iowa, too. But since we purchased your properties, we wanted to show you what has become of them. Project number one, 227 South Ninth Street. This house has been rehabbed and sold. To give you a sense of where this is, it's about a stone's throw away from Bracewell on Ninth Street. And this is what it looked like when we bought the property. It's now been rehabilitated to code and sold to an income-qualified family of four, not five, that's my mistake. Part of the, the impetus of this was Regional Planning staff has gone out to many of our cities in southeast Iowa, asking how we could help redevelop neighborhoods. All of us have seen, we have some great neighborhoods, we have some ones that are kind of in transition, and we want to help stabilize these neighborhoods by doing projects such as these. And, and the city agreed to put some stipulations on an auction. And those stipulations were, the house had to be rehabbed to code and also sold to an income-qualified family. Income-qualified means 80% of the area median income for one person, that's about $38,000. For a family of four, it's around $55,000. So this four-bedroom, two-bath home featured dilapidated porches, a demolished kitchen, and antiquated mechanicals. We have the after picture on the next slide.
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh-
Sweet.
Looks a little bit better now.
What you don't get the sense of is what the kitchen looked like without being inside the house.
And, and the, the atmosphere.
And the atmosphere.
The atmosphere. Ambi-, atmosphere.
So just to highlight who we partnered with on this project, Kim Staub from RE/MAX was our Realtor. The developer was Housing Inc. M&amp;H Construction was the contractor. We bid, we bid out the general construction to Mike Hartman. Great River Housing Trust Fund, which the city also contributes annually for local match, financed this and also contributed a $25,000 forgivable loan for this project. And then Great River Housing also came up with $7,500 for down payment assistance. However, that is repayable when the house is sold and it goes back and it's used again.
Sweet.
A couple of other photos of the completed project. This is the back of the house, just doing, looks like we're doing some finish-up work here. And the next photo is the kitchen, but I couldn't bring the atmosphere with me, so.
Darn. Darn it. Wow.
And this is the kitchen after. And we used, we tried to go for, I'd call them moderate finishes, things that, you know, we would enjoy in our house. We didn't go for, hey, this is the bargain basement price, we've got to go low, we've got to save money. We're like, hey, this, the whole purpose of this is to stabilize housing values in the neighborhood. So we want this to be an appreciating asset, not one that falls in value. And this is the dining room. This is all actually intact woodwork, including the French doors. And we actually utilized the preservation station to match some of the trim.
Wow.
We, I didn't do that, the contractor did. I can't take credit. So all in all, a great project. It was on the market a little bit longer than, than what we wanted, but the end result is great. The family of four is using all four bedrooms, and hopefully they'll have a great life there.
Awesome. Awesome. When did, when did this, when did that project start, that house?
We started that 20s-
Two years ago.
2016, I think.
Yeah.
We finished it probably September of 17. Pocketed an article on it, we had an open house. And I think we had a purchase agreement in a late March, early April timeframe that we closed in kind of mid-May this year.
Was this the young lady? Was this the, I'm thinking of a different property.
NSP house.
It's a different house.
Okay.
This process really started, I would give credit to, to some extent to Bill Partain. And he started to push 2013-ish, 2014, somewhere in there, of really wanting to have a focus in this area. And Mike got to be a part of that, and several others did, too. And this was something that the city could come alongside and have a house that we'd gotten through a 657A process and, and put in a, a spot to, that addressed some of the, targeted areas that have been pointed out as needing to be really focused on over time. And this has been a, so for southeast Iowa, then to be able to come in and, and have a major role in this, this isn't something that, that we fit in. This is something that, isn't something that Bill Partain at Two Rivers necessarily, that they fit in, except as a partner. And so I think you'll just see a lot of folks that have been involved to try to make this happen, and it doesn't happen quickly. But hopefully, we can get a, a structure like this to be able to work again on a quicker turnaround than 2013 to 2018.
Better late than never on that, but now that's-
And I don't, I'm sorry, I cut off where you're probably at and what you're wanting to present.
No, Jim, I'm glad you added that. The, the group was, I don't remember the acronym now, but we called it SURGE, and there's different versions of this going. And this next project, I think, builds on this concept in a little bit different way. This is another city, city purchase lot with the same stipulations as the last one, built to code, sold to a lower or moderate income family. Only this time, we reached out to SCC Building Trades, and they're going to do most of the carpentry on the project. We're using local suppliers, and we're also developing the project and, you know, bidding out the, all the trades. So, so they're going to take, undertake the general carpentry and some skilled carpentry. There's some things we need to bid out like sheet rock and painting, but they're going to do pretty much all of it. Part of this, I would like to respectfully request the city waive our, our building permit fee so that we can keep, keep the price of the house down as low as possible. Next slide shows the progress. Our basement contractors are the Hay brothers. I think they're from around Minneapolis, and they are going on the basement. So the basement walls are poured. We had some large trees removed. I learned that the very large tree was a tree of paradise. So if you ever see a tree of paradise, they get that big. On the previous slide, that big one in the background.
A tree of paradise?
That's a tree of paradise.
I've never even heard of a tree of paradise.
I know.
Do you want the tulip tree, maybe?
I heard of the tree that was in paradise, but-
Once you see it, you'll see them all over town.
Tree of paradise. Never heard of that.
I haven't either.
So, so this is, this is going right now, and SCC should start building this, doing the floor platform here in, in mid-August when, when they come back. So just the profile on this one, Housing Inc. is the developer again. Our main contractors, SCC Building Trades, Construction Financing, Great River Housing Trust Fund. Again, that's something that the city contributes local match to. And so Housing Trust Fund is, is financing this. When we sell it, we'll give the money right back to them, and we'll do another project. We're also doing another neighborhood development grant for $25,000, and the down payment assistance will be available. And just have the, the floor plan up here. It's about 1,300 square feet, has a basement. The basement can be finished. We stubbed in plumbing down there, three-bed, two-bath garage. Should be a nice addition to the neighborhood.
What are you looking to sell that for?
Target price is probably low to mid-140s if we can keep costs down.
It'd be nice to be able to get several of those a year. It's a price point that-
It would. It would.
It's a price point that we're missing.
And there are, you know, there are, with the trades program- And there are, you know, there are, with the trades program, I think it's a great partnership because, you know, the students can help fill some of the skilled trade gaps we have. They can also learn the skill on their own, where they can buy their own home and improve it with the skills they're learning here. So hopefully, we'll be doing, kind of pollinating these around southeast Iowa, but we certainly like to do more in Burlington, too.
We certainly would like you guys to do more in Burlington, too.
We'll keep working.
That was amazing, that South Ninth house. How did those people cook there before? Did they just have a gas grill?
They ate peanut butter all the time.
You know, I think, I think they had had a small fire in the kitchen, and they, and they intended to work on it, you know, so they demolished the kitchen, but, you know, life happened, and there the house was, so.
Wow. Remarkable.
So do we need a formal resolution on the way with those fees?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be something that.
Just clarification, they have an approved permit, and we're just holding that until we got word from council on whether you want to move forward, and we can bring something forward if that's.
And I would like to compliment Eric and the, and the building department. They were super responsive on our permit request. We had kind of a series of events where we asked them to work with us and move quickly, and they, and they did it. So that was very much appreciated.
That's good to hear. Thank you. You guys have any other questions for Mike?
How many more do you want to do this year?
Good question.
We had one thing that we didn't get approval on. Are you familiar with that or not? No, you're not. We had an application for.
Owner-occupied rehab.
Owner-occupied rehab that had been submitted to.
IDA is a CBGB grant.
That was one that we got notice back, it was sent to the mayor, that they didn't accept our application on. It's one that we've been, we're trying to do through southeast Iowa. And.
Hadn't received any communication from IDA yet.
Yeah, we did. So that's unfortunate that we didn't get that, but that's one, we do try multiple different things that we're, that we're working on and.
Well, and just as that application didn't come in, we're working on our second home down payment assistance grant. And that's a grant that pays for down payment assistance plus rehab. And I think, I think the first one was around 350, second one, I think, is around 350 as well. So that's 700,000 of federal money coming down to help purchase and rehabilitate homes. But that's probably a whole nother presentation, Jim.
Are you still working to try to do homes, home building, a tiny home building type thing through, with one of the prisons?
Yeah. While I'm up here, I'll talk about an initiative. Regional Planning has been working with Iowa Prison Industries on, and this would be a statewide offender-built housing program where they would go through certain partnerships at the Uton Homes would be built as a full home, and then shipped out on a truck and delivered on-site. So we think this could be a great thing for more infill projects for a lot of our neighborhoods. And these would be approximately probably 11-hertz square foot homes, something like this. We're modeling the program off of one that South Dakota has in place, and they've, they've built approximately 2,000 homes over, I think they've been doing it 16 years. We've visited up there a couple of times.
They built 2,000 homes in 16 years?
I think so, yeah.
All right.
So.
Work it out, brother.
So at some point, I'll probably be coming back to the council, asking for kind of a support resolution. The other 16 councils of governments in Iowa are all kind of working on this together. Regional Planning here in southeast Iowa, we're kind of spearheading this with, with prison industries. And we almost had some money last year with the state appropriation. We're looking at other, other funding sources, possibly through private donations from large corporate, corporate groups. State appropriation is also an option. But, but yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Jim. And that could be something we'll see soon here in the region.
That'd be nice.
That's another one of those topics that has been worked on for four or five years, and you're still not there. But it, they, they take a lot of time and effort to get to something that's an official program.
We're pretty patient. We'll keep at it.
Come back with some good news for us, Mike.
We'll try. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Anything else you want to have somebody regurgitate, my friend? Great Places Application, number five. Chuck?
Yep. Take all the time.
Just for some backstory here, last year Burlington's downtown riverfront was designated as a great place, one of the Iowa great places. That makes it eligible for grant funding. You might have remembered this from last year, we did a Facebook poll where, so we're eligible for about, you know, 200,000 to 400,000 in grant funding. And that's not enough to fund all of our Great Places Vision Plan, which was our riverfront vision plan from the flood mitigation study. So that had the splash pad, the floating boardwalk, the outdoor amphitheater, the seating with shade structures. Anything included in our riverfront vision plan that was, come up with as part of our flood mitigation project is eligible for Great Places grant money, because that whole thing is our great place, the downtown riverfront. And last year, we couldn't decide which project to apply for. There was some different ideas going around there, so we, we didn't end up submitting an application. This year, after talking with the, the granting agency, Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, they think it would be in our best interest to submit a grant for all of these projects. We have the Tiger Grant, which is about $4 million for just riverfront work. So we can likely fund the majority, if not all of these projects. So what we would do is we would apply for a Great Places project, is just Burlington Riverfront. And as long as we meet our one-to-one match, which I'm recommending, we ask for $400,000. So as long as we spend $400,000 on a variety of projects, we will be okay. That doesn't mean we'll have to get every single project done that's in our Great Places grant application. For instance, we might say we're going to get a splash pad done, a floating boardwalk, an outdoor amphitheater, a riverfront trail, and then some shading and seed structures. If we don't get to all of them, that's okay, as long as we, we meet our one-to-one match requirement. So we, we just spoke about a splash pad a little bit last year, and here's a rendering of what it would look like in front of our port with, you can see the port shade structure up there as well. We discussed, we've been discussing two locations. The preferred location was in front of the port, but if we wanted to take a step back and keep some of that riverfront parking, it could be shifted over to in front of the auditorium, where we have a large plaza-type area right now that's not parking. And that's what it currently looks like with this current, with this phase of the flood wall constructed. The instruction area stops right around here. So we'd be looking at doing a splash pad here or there. And you can see the auditorium plaza area extends quite a bit out. The other amenities we've looked at as part of our Great Places grant application are the, there's some larger shade structures here, and there's our outdoor amphitheater with a floating, or a dock that sticks out over the river that people could play music on. You can sit in the amphitheater and watch the performance on the river. And again, here's our floating boardwalk. That's, we also have some boating infrastructure grant money for this. Part plan as part of that are port upgrades, including new restrooms, and then a deck off the side that would be protected by the flood wall. So estimated costs for all this. The major change from last year is our splash pad for this budget is about twice as much as we budgeted last year. And that's because this one would be a recycling splash pad. It wouldn't just use water that would continuously be pumped out. It would pump the water out, clean it, and then pump it back out. And that, in the long run, reduces operation and maintenance costs quite a bit. It's much more expensive upfront, but it is longer, it's cheaper in the long run. The shade structures estimate is about 150,000 for two large steel structures on our riverfront overlooks, as well as a structure over the port building. Our auditorium event, outdoor amphitheater is 150,000. And then our floating boardwalk, some pleasure docks, and the port building upgrades are estimated at about 3.1 million. So if we do a 15% for design, and then a 20% contingency, which is a very healthy contingency, the total for this project package would be a little over 5 million.
That's more than 400,000.
Right. So.
Thanks, Jim.
Funding sources. That leads me right into here. So this is what would make up the funding package for all these projects. 4 million from the Tiger Grant, 1.7 from the boating infrastructure grant, and then 400,000 from Great Places. It's important to note that from the boating infrastructure, we don't have tier two yet. We have tier one, which is 200,000. So we'd still need to get 1.5 million more. And then, of course, we'd also need to be successful in our Great Places grant application.
So what we've heard on the tier two, if you get in line with having the tier, the tier one done, you're in a, in pretty good position to be able to get that tier two.
Right.
The tier two, though, requires that we have a local match on it. Is that correct?
It is. And we've talked about using our flood mitigation money as our match for the boating infrastructure grant. The.
This would also qualify as match for it?
Yes. The Great Places money would also qualify as match. So the dock would be part of the boating infrastructure grant, and the flood wall will wrap around it to protect it. So we can use that, the wall, as well as the erosion control and bank stabilization as our match for that grant.
So a lot of the project that was being talked about with the boating infrastructure grant was being funded not just with the boating infrastructure grant itself, but was reliant on the Tiger Grant to, to make up the, the match on it. At the same time, the boating infrastructure, boating infrastructure grant wouldn't allow the Tiger funds, which were other federal funds, they're both federal pots, to count as our local match. So we had to have, there has to be something else that we have with that to, to be able to make sure that we are getting the, the appropriate matches for these different grant applications.
Right. You might also notice that our funding total, 6.1 million, is more than the potential budget items, 5.8, a little over 5 million. And that's because the 5 million is for the big four, the splash pad, the outdoor amphitheater, shade structures in the dock. There are more planned improvements, boat trailer parking dedicated for one lot is a planned improvement. Our trail is planned to extend further along the riverfront. And then there's some more green space planned. So we should hopefully be in the clear on these four big items, and then have a little bit of wiggle room to do more projects.
As long as it's part of what was written within the Tiger Grant. And it has to do with that river, this overall river, riverfront visioning, the effort that we'd done. That was what the basis was of the Tiger Grant application.
Right.
If we, if the council chooses not to do these components on the, the Great Places and seek this funding, we still do need to have a match if we're going to go after the boating infrastructure, which is possible. As Charlie kind of noted, that we can use the next phase of our flood wall work to count as, as long as it's up on that northern end, protecting this area, to count as our local match. That, we've, we've been working on that and trying to, our only concern is making sure that we can have the timing of that project happen in a way that's appropriate to count as the match on the boating infrastructure grant.
Right. Applying for the Great Places grant as a package gives us a little bit more of a safety net. If we're not able to count as much of the flood project as we want for our boating infrastructure grant, we can then use that 400,000 from the Great Places grant to fill in that gap and, and get us to our one-to-one match.
What's the, okay, what's the stipulation on the Great Places grant? What do we, what do we have to do to get that?
It's, so we applied to be designated as a great place about a year ago, and we had to do a public visioning process, which was our flood wall grant work. And then we have a one-to-one match as well for dollars. So we're using our other grants to match this Great Places grant money.
You guys are hustling.
Now, the question is, the.
We're snowballing.
The question, last, at last year, as we were doing this process, we were talking about submitting one of the items on the list as our application. This time, we're looking at putting all of them on there. We're in a much different financial position in terms of having the Tiger Grant now to help to, to capitalize and help, help that process. Charlie, at this point, you're just looking to do an overall concept that includes all of these as potential projects?
Yes. And like I said, they don't all have to be built. We just have to make sure we're building enough to meet our one-to-one match. So if we do a million dollars worth of work, we would still be good for the Great Places grant.
You're hustling, man.
Well, this, this stuff is, it's all neat to see the different pieces and how they can work together and coordinate off. And we'd kind of talked when, when, when we first started working with Veenster and Kim on this overall visioning process, they, we, they talked about the idea of using that as a catalyst to be able to make a lot of these other things happen. And we're seeing the ability to do it. It's just a lot of moving pieces that are going on.
Just like dominoes, one gets going and they all. Very exciting.
Well, all right, Domino Playa.
So here's a timeline moving forward from here. I'll submit a pre-application tomorrow, and then our actual application will be due in November. And at that point, I'll need a council resolution of support for the, the project proposal. And we have till 2021 to get whatever we put in there built, or the majority of whatever we put in there built.
We're good on that timeline, right?
Yep.
The biggest, the biggest point, piece that, that is difficult for me is just the, where we are with sales tax collections and the increment that's been off of that. This year has been much lower than what last year was. Haven't seen what the, we've only seen reports on the first two quarters, we, which is through the end of last December. We haven't seen even through March yet for what the reimbursement is on that. That's difficult to, to not have those numbers and know what to be expecting. Until we see those numbers start to rebound, it's, it has me nervous for where the next phase is. I, I like to have, have it cover and be, be a little bit more secure on it. We've delayed our process by probably a year anyway. And if we are able to do it with just the year delay, we don't have any issues. If all these other components work anyway, they, we have matches to make all these other pieces work. That being said, the work that we've done along the flood wall, until we close off the northern end and tie off to the bridge abutment, crossing the, the short line up, up on the north end, we, we really aren't getting the best bang for a buck on, on the, on the efforts we put, put in. We need to get that done. And we'll, you know, we'll have to see where sales tax collections come, and may have to look at alternative ways to make that happen, depending on, on just how that process unfolds.
When do you expect those to be in, Jim? Any idea?
Well, we get our next quarter, not, not until late August, I think, was what she said.
We should know third quarter numbers within the month.
But I mean, that's, that's just given another snapshot. I don't know what, whether it's, how much we're going to see really for a rebound that soon. I'm thinking more of six to 12 months down the road to see how these, these numbers progress. Our first quarter numbers this year was zero. The second quarter, we had 24,000, I think. That's after last year, we had 300,000, I think, for collections.
Yep.
So, I mean, we went from 300,000 in a year to seeing a quarter where the numbers reversed by about, I mean, our sales tax collection, collections countywide, year over year, were at least 5% down. And, you know, they can come back up, but I would assume they come back up a lot slower than what they went down.
Right. And if, for some reason, it doesn't work out with the timing of the next phase of the flood wall, we can use that Great Place, Great Places grant money to match our boating infrastructure grant, but we're going to have to scale back. So this project can still largely go on without the flood wall work, but it's, it'll, it'll adjust a bit if that happens.
But, but we're not going to, I mean, we'll be able to scale back without having any, okay, okay. All right. Good work. Say it to him again, man. Good work. That one was for me. All right.
I think that's, part of that, though, is making sure that you recognize that depending on how the different pieces all work, we don't, even though we're including all this, we don't know at the end which ones, what, are going to make it through.
I will speak for the boardwalk. I had, I had 10 boaters from Sebula here this weekend, and I guarantee in the hotels, the restaurants, and with Marina, there were 60 boaters, and they probably dropped seven, eight grand here. I mean, with, with me, it was phenomenal. So if we could get that floating boat dock where we had the public docks, and the more we encourage that. So if we can get that floating boat dock where we have the public docks, and the more we encourage that, uh, river tourism is where we've been missing it, and we get that river tourism, that's another big, huge deal, so.
Fired up. That's good stuff. All right. We're doing it, guys. Let's close it out. Mr. Teslin?
We do have a couple of appointments.
Mayor Protem, please do. My computer's closed. I missed that one.
So we have, um, for the Joint Safety Committee, um, Matt Trexel and Ryan Gur, Gurley, Gurley, sorry. Their terms expire and, um, it's requested that we reappoint both.
I've got a problem with Matt Trexel. See you. Then, no, I don't.
And then for the Riverfront Advisory Committee, um, Patricia Walsh has expressed interest in serving, so.
I'm good.
On the, on the Riverfront gender balance, we're okay? Because she's replacing a female, I would, I would assume.
Yeah, I would assume as well.
Okay, we're good. All right. Mr. Teslin? Peanut butter.
Get ready.
You're good?
Oh, gosh.
Three on three?
Practicing dribbling for the Gus Macker Tournament, which is this weekend, right? Correct, or next weekend?
You have to worry about dribbling.
It's this weekend. Oh, I have less time to practice. I'm.
This weekend.
Probably down. Okay, so come on down to the riverfront and, uh, check out, uh, some ballin'.
Only the best city hall basketball team on the planet. Anyways.
Hey, I, I regret if I won't be here because I am a strong post-up player, but I won't be here and in town. I will call in for next week's meeting, city council. I'll be on vacation, but I'll, I'll do that, so.
I'm going to miss your post-up skills, but we're going to make it happen without you, my friend.
Don't let this 5-8 fool you.
I'm telling you. Just want to remind everybody again, uh, this coming Thursday, the Block Party, um, uh, Gladys White Park, Stone Gardens, and Saunders, Saunders Heights. And, uh, for those that live close to Saunders Heights, again, we're having, uh, pizza. And on the last, on the last day, you've got, you've got one, you got one there? I'll take one of those. And on the last day, which is August 9th, um, come on to Saunders Field. Well, I'm going to feed you so much pizza, you guys are going to talk about me later. That's how much fun it's going to be. So from Thursday, from 6 to 8 at Gladys White Saunders and, uh, Stone Garden Parks. You can call Victor Moore at 319-572-4174. You're welcome. Annie?
I got nothing.
You've got nothing? All right. Point guard, point guard.
Does anyone know the, with the Gus Macker Tournament, the Friday night has a, a lead-in game? Does anyone have the details on that?
I heard it's going to be a total smackdown. That's what the fridge said, so I'm looking for some information on it.
Let's see, uh, 6:30 on Friday, Midwest Magic versus Fire Department, so. Three on three.
Another slaughter.
Can you do better than the police department?
I'm not sure. I'm not playing. I'm not a basketball player, so. We'll see how that goes.
While, while you're up here, do you happen to know how, uh, the boots versus badges? I get, I'm getting a big nod from that. How, how much was raised? That's what I was wondering. Not who v. who.
I don't.
I don't know if that's.
Kind of, I don't, I don't think he's actually making that figure public this year. So it's a lot.
How, how the score, what was the score of?
Well, it was two games to one. Yeah.
Thanks, G. All right.
Go ahead. You can do what you want. What is it?
That's pretty dangerous to say that.
Yeah, I know.
As you may have noticed, uh, the security fencing at the, uh, riverfront has come down, as well as the temporary wall. My staff removed it last week. Uh, we're removing the Hescos, uh, today, tomorrow, uh, probably into Wednesday a little bit, but. So it's open for business. I guess there's still some things that need to be buttoned up with the tractor. So there's, there's a bit of seeding that needs to be done. Um, unfortunately, you have to follow seed dates. Uh, there's some in the spring and some in the fall, and so we're right in the middle of the summer. So we'll have to do it here this, uh, fall. Uh, there's quite a bit of weeds growing in there. Those will be knocked down. Um, and there's some sod in the middle that, uh, suffered a little bit when the irrigation system went kaputts. So it's got to be made right, but, uh, it's open. It's just there's some, there's some contract things that need to be buttoned up before it's finalized.
Looks nice.
It does. Um, and then the other thing is, is on Monday, uh, there, or not Monday, what is it, the 7th? It's a Tuesday. Uh, they are planning to start work on Mount Pleasant Street between Roosevelt and Gere. I don't know what direction they're heading. My guess is from Roosevelt. Um, but I, I will let you know, there'll be a press release out if it hasn't already gone out.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Along with the riverfront, uh, as you get a chance to go down there and take a look at what's going on, uh, I would encourage you to look at the sidewalk patterns that we've done down there and, uh, some of the lighting that's gone on down there. And the reason I mention that is we talk, have a group that's looking forward to talking about Main Street corridor and the Jefferson Street corridor. Uh, we're, we're looking at what are some themes that we can carry that tie into that. Uh, as we designed, as, as we designed that sidewalk, we tried to have a pattern in there that was easier to match over time than what's down on. It's a little bit more random so that you can. Pavers are cool, too, yes. Thanks, Nick. Um, we tried to have a pattern that was a little bit easier over time to, as you get, I mean, what we've had on Jefferson Street, every time that that's been replaced, it looks different, and you just can't match it. We tried to have something that purposefully had a little bit of pattern to it that allowed you to have replacements that built off of that pattern that weren't as, uh, quite as color-specific. But we do want to have something that is able to carry that flavor through, throughout the, those corridors that we're going to be working on with the Tiger Grant. We do want you to also be thinking about where does that fit in for the rest of the downtown? Is that a pattern that we want to see, that we work on, uh, and, and try to get some schematics out there that, uh, that we can have as a consistent pattern for the, the downtown area? Not just the sidewalk pattern, but, um, we're going to be doing a discussion about what are the lights? As we redo Jefferson Street, you have historic lights on there. What are we doing with those? Are we going to go back to those same historic lights? Or are we going to do some type of light that, um, is maybe historic in nature, but that can tie in a little bit better with what we've done on the waterfront? Uh, I think that's just something that's going to be some of those discussion topics that occurs over the next couple of years. So please do, again, take a look at those over the next couple of weeks and just be cognizant and think about how does that fit in with the downtown area? I'm on the radio, I guess, on Wednesday?
Do you want to go?
Oh, no. Who wants, uh, yes, I'll be on the radio on Wednesday. Um, old PD building. Where are we at with that?
Uh, working with our attorneys on setting up the closing on that, uh, to the individuals that purchased it. How long ago was that?
Last fall.
Yeah. So transfer of deed and getting the abstract and everything to them. But I have a call with our attorney tomorrow morning to make sure we're on same page with everything for that.
Yeah, they were, that's been contingent waiting for them to close on the property adjacent. They had that scheduled to occur by the end of this month, so they must be moving forward. That's the best I can guess on, on that. So that's a really good deal. I can't wait to, to have this, have the signature done on transferring that property officially out of our hands. And actually see them get a project that gets, that will really transform the downtown. Creden, I forgot. Oh, and I don't know if, we have two other buildings downtown that we've had discussions on over the last year or more with developers looking to potentially develop and looking for cooperation from us on parking. At some point, they'll be here in front of council, but if you notice, a chain link fence has gone up around those two buildings. They're looking to do some roof work over the, were they beginning that this week?
I, within the next week or two, they're going to start that.
So they're getting prepped for that, and, um, you know, we continue to have discussions with BNSF on, uh, the potential of a, either land purchase or a land swap. Uh, they've, the, the, I think it's probably been every other week communications for four months. Um, this last communication, they did seem to express an interest in, in having a land swap occur. Until we have something in writing, that's a verbal conversation, that there's an interest there, uh, hopefully we can get something accomplished.
Makes me feel a little better than leasing.
Yes. And, you know, this is something where last summer, the council did agree to, committed to doing what we needed to do to try to, to make a, parking needs be able to be, uh, met for this development to occur. A lot has changed with some of their requests and how they're looking at it. Uh, you know, we had some potential designs and we've set money as, I mean, it's part of what we've done over the last year, looking at that manor sale, making sure that we were setting enough aside that we were able to hit some of those initial cost estimates for what that might look like. We're getting closer to seeing what, what that might actually be and where it fits for the developer and, and maybe some modifications off of that that work with, uh, where they're at now, too. So that, that will come. That's something we continue to talk with them about. But yeah, that's going to be a, a presentation that will come. I don't know if it'll be the next meeting.
I think, I think they're looking tentatively the last one in August.
Okay. So just to know that's on the horizon, too. And that's it.
Lot of great things happening.
All right.
Just going to survive Nick's constant street construction.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. And thank you, sir. Oh, you have one more thing. This guy's out of order. This guy, come on down.
I'd like to say the Optimus Club is also donating $600 worth of bikes at the end of the year from Bickles, which is going to be, uh, we're going to be drawing names to give away bikes to the kids this year, which we do it every year.
Is there an age limit on the kids that?
Uh, it's going to be different age, at different age rates, not in, not you.
What would make you think I was talking about me, Victor? You're out of order, my friend.
Yeah, so, uh, Optimus Club has stepped in and, and granted, um, $600 worth of bikes from Bickles, so, and they.
So will they, will they have a drawing on the, on the, what is that, the 6th? Is that when that's going to take place?
The 9th.
The 9th, yes.
That'd be the last day, so I'll be picking the bikes up and, um, I'll be distributing them, two bikes to East Park. So it's totaled with six bikes, $600.
All right, all right. So two, two bikes will be coming to Saunders.
Yeah, they, they going to be, they going, they willing to, uh, to do this every year, so.
All right, that's true.
And, uh, greatly appreciate.
Bike helmets, too?
I don't, I'm not sure about the helmets. I didn't go that far, so.
All righty, all right. Thank you again, Victor.
You're welcome.
Okay. We're good? Okay. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.